Alderman Lasch.
President.
Alderman Warman.
Here.
Mayor Evans, present.
Is there motion to approve the minutes of June 20th, 2023?
Second.
Committee of the whole, motion by Alderman Garza, second by Alderman Smith, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries by voice. So, Madam Clerk, do we have any members of the public wishing to offer public comment?
We do.
Will you first read the rules of public comment?
Pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, all persons shall be permitted an opportunity to address public officials under the rules established and recorded by the council. Under our rules, any person may address the Committee of the Whole for up to three minutes with a maximum of 30 minutes allotted for all public comment. No person other than the timekeeper or the chair for the purpose of maintaining order may interrupt a person recognized for public comment during his or her comments. Members of the Committee of the Whole shall not engage with nor respond to a speaker during the time set aside for public comment. Staff is directed to follow up with members of the public with respect to any concerns raised during public comment within the scope of the city's authority, following the adjournment of this meeting.
Madam Clerk, do you call the first speaker wishing to offer public comment?
Sandy Schmidt.
Ms. Schmidt, you have three minutes to speak again now.
Hi, Sandy Schmidt, Ward Five, Alder Person Precinct, I should say precinct committee person, AU 29. I actually have two comments. One would be on the Resolution 23-0491 about the Park District sharing the cost of water main improvements on Orchard and Illinois. So I listened to the audio and I have to say Alderman or Alderwoman Baird, Baird, Alderwoman Smith, Alderman Franco and Alderman Donald had great questions as far as passing the, before passing it. The one thing I was curious about is at the end Alderwoman Smith mentioned that there could possibly be more bids before proceeding and the gentleman that was doing the presentation said, yes, there were and that he would provide them after the approval. So you all approved it without noting what the other bids were and who bid. So you like approved the construction person before you knew the other bids. So I'm just not sure what that was about. I would love some feedback, but I specifically heard Alderwoman Smith say, who are the other bids on the project? And the gentleman said he would provide them later and you said that would be great. I would like to know what those were. The other one would be the Resolution 23-0465 about the, the, let's see, the new, the new, for the windows, Lindsay Windows off of Constitution. And again, some great questions. Alderman Donald mentioned the berm and landscaping, which I think is super important because we know in the past there have been other warehouses that have been added without necessarily putting into contract what might protect the people in the neighborhood next to them. So I thought it was great that they're going to keep the berm and that they're planning on doing some landscaping. I would love to see that that would be actually put in the contract before moving forward with building an extra 10,000 square foot building and the traffic, et cetera, in that area. And also one last thing, if you all wouldn't mind, sometimes I can hear certain people speaking, but not always including, sometimes the city clerk reading out the ordinances. So I don't know what that is, but if you wouldn't mind making sure I could, as well as everybody else could hearing, that would be great. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, do you have additional speakers?
Adam Pauly.
Mr. Pauly, you have three minutes beginning now.
Hey, everybody. July 15th is International Drag Day and the LGBT Advisory Board will be hosting an event at Altaro at, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., which is going to be a drag show. It is 21 and over because this is an event with alcohol included. It is featuring Carrie Triad. She was the grand marshal of the Pride Parade and all of the proceeds will be going to the Drag Defense Fund. There is a link up on, a signup link on Eventbrite. If you have trouble with that, feel free to reach out to me. Thank you.
Any additional speakers, Madam Clerk?
There is not.
All right, let's go on to the next portion of the agenda. Let's go on to committee reports. Chairwoman Smith, can you give, Patty Smith, can you give the Building, Zoning, Economic Development Committee report, please?
Certainly, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Building, Zoning and Economic Development Committee met on June 28th, 2023 and reviewed the following. 23-0171, An Ordinance Amending Chapter 49 of the Code of Ordinance, City of Aurora, by modifying the zoning map attached thereto to rezone property located near the northeast corner of North Farnsworth Ave and Mountain Street from R1, One Family Dwelling District to M1 Manufacturing District Limited. Item 23-0491, A Resolution Authorizing Execution of an Intergovernmental Agreement Between the City of Aurora and the Fox Valley Park District, Describing the Cost Sharing of the West Illinois Ave to Orchard Ave Water Main Improvement Project and City Water Main Easement Required for the Proposed Location of the Water Main. And lastly, 23-
No, before we, before we go on, I'm just gonna, yeah, no. So for 23-017, with no objection, that item will go on consent. 23, I'm sorry, 0171, 23-0491, with no objection, that item will go on consent as well. Continues.
We're not channeling our consent person.
I just had, I just had one question on-
Which one?
0171.
Go ahead, Alderman Lasch.
The question just quickly is similar. I noticed that this was near, looking at the map, some residential areas. What are we doing there to make sure that the residents aren't impacted by the change in zoning for?
Ed Seben.
Good afternoon, Alderman. Ed Seben, Zoning and Planning Director. There is a landscape plan in your packet, so what they're doing is there are homes on Mountain Street behind us and they will be installing a six-foot privacy fence at a 25-foot setback, which is the requirement of M1 to residential. And then in that 25-foot gap, there is a row of landscaping that's on the plan in your packet.
Okay, and was there any consideration for extra truck traffic?
Say that again.
Was there any consideration or concern over the extra truck traffic?
No, there's, there's a condition that there's no traffic to Farnsworth. The thought is there's a industrial yard to the east, American Water Products. They will possibly expand into this or the access will be north to Sheffer Road. So there is no access to Mountain.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. All right, Alderman Buck, is that on 23-0171?
Yeah, I read through it. Of course, it says it's going to be for storage. Storage of what?
It could either be vehicles or equipment. For example, Nextdoor, there's pipes and things like that. Mr. Hernandez is the property owner here. He may also use it. He has a concrete business, so do you want to?
Yes, we propose this project is going to have a hard surface asphalt and obviously the landscaping, so we can park either trucks or equipment, you know, pretty much it.
Okay, and for Mr. Seben, if they, I mean, depending on the size of the truck, they'll have to get a special permit if they're going full-size trucks?
Well, yes, we have, it's a special use, the zoning, we apply it for a special use, right?
Yeah, it would be normal trucks. It wouldn't be any oversized trucks. That's not the plan. And this area has been planned for industrial, so the zoning is being brought into compliance with the comp plan.
Okay.
So it could be, it could be, it could be vehicles or it could be equipment. They are going to be paving it to allow for vehicles.
Okay, so you, let's pinpoint on the size then, because large and kind of large, how large are the trucks going to be going on this?
I mean, the site is about an acre and a half. It could be, I mean, we can fit semi-trucks there if we need to, which I don't think we're going to use. We have-
That's what we're saying. Semi-trucks, semi-truck trailers will not be allowed. That's what we're saying. So we need to get on the same page.
Yes, I mean, if that's the case, that the property, that the entire project that we're going to be projecting all the way to Sheffer, we have close to 12 acres, which we plan to have like a mechanic shaft and truck parking. In this area, we're not planning to have truck parks, mostly similar to Nextdoor, which is like a six-wheeler or flatbed, you know, like 26-foot-long bed with a cab. That's mostly that type of trucks. But to bring it all the way to the back is not our plan, to bring semi there, semi-trucks. So.
Okay. Up to 26 feet. Okay.
Any other questions? So, all right, that was 23-0171, with no objection, that item will go on consent. We've already put 23-0491 on consent and left. Are there any questions there?
May I offer a comment on that one?
Which one?
23-0491.
All right.
In our legislative information, it says eight bids were received by the city and opened and read aloud on May 21st, 2023. We did ask for those bids to be attached to our legislative for this next meeting, so I'm not sure if they're on the COW, let's say could be on our, for our next meeting.
Ken, Mr. Schroth. Hold on, one second.
Good evening, Ken Schroth, Public Works. Yes, Alderwoman. There were eight bids read aloud and they're, they are attached to the item in INT, but we can make sure we work with the clerk's office to include it on this item too. So it's on item 23-0484 is where all the eight bids are shown.
Alderman Seville.
That's what I was going to say.
That they were attached?
Yeah, it's on the INT agenda of 23-0444.
Correct. Beautiful. Next, Alderman Smith.
Final item, 23-0465, A Resolution Approving the Revision of the Final Plot of Lot One for West Ramers Subdivision Located at 55 South Constitution Drive and Establishing Lindsay Windows and Door Subdivision.
No objection, item going consent. I'm sorry. That's the final, no action needed.
Thank you.
All right, let's go on to, in that completed BZE. All right, Chairman Franco, can you do the Finance Committee report?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Finance Committee met on June 29th, 2023. We did not have a quorum and the item scheduled for that meeting will appear under New Business later on this agenda and that's all we have.
All righty.
Finance.
Thank you much. Vice Chair, Danell, can you give the Public Health, Safety and Transportation Committee report, please?
Happy to, Mayor. The Public Health, Safety and Transportation Committee that on June 27th, 2023, review one item, which is 23-0488, a resolution repealing R01-7173, authorizing the execution of an emergency warning siren activation agreement.
Thanks. Between the City of Aurora and the Village of Montgomery, at this original agreement, we activated the sirens for the Village of Montgomery and we thought now that of our both respective sides, it's best that we do that independently. So that's what that item was for.
Consent. Consent.
No objection, item going consent.
And that's all from Public Health, Safety and Transportation.
Thank you very much. Chairwoman Garza, can you give the Infrastructure and Technology-
Mayor, we have together on June 26th. First item is 23-0461, A Resolution About Bid Proposal for Materials for Business, Inc., Betavia, Illinois, Truth Sourcewell Cooperative Agreement Contract 12, 1919, STI, in the amount of $87,675.23.
No objections, item going consent.
Next item is 23-0462, A Resolution Authorizing Crawford Morphine Tile to Provide Professional Engineering Services to the Water Production Division for a New Water Well Construction Project, an amount not to exceed $283,000.
Consent.
No objections, item going consent.
23-0484, A Resolution to Award the Illinois Avenue to Orsha Avenue Water Main Improvement Project Located in Ward Six to a Stock Excavator, Inc., to the bid amount of $402,861.00.
Consent.
No objections, item going consent.
They conclude the meeting, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Chairman Ron Warman can give the Rules, Administration and Procedure Committee report.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Rules, Administration, Procedure Committee, scheduled for June 20th, 2023, was canceled. No items on the agenda.
All right. That concludes committee reports. Let's go on to New Business. Madam Clerk, can you read the first item under New Business?
23-0467, A Resolution Authorizing the Extension of Project Completion for 514 Claim Street.
Was this one that was under Finance that's going under New Business? If it was? You want to explain, Alderman Franco, a little bit about that? All right, that's fine.
Good evening, Ruthie Harris, Property Standards Manager. I am looking for an approval on a resolution authorizing an extension for the rehab completion of 514 Claim Street. This property was severely damaged due to a fire and it sat vacant for quite some time and as time passed, it just became more and more in disrepair. The City of Aurora was granted a judicial deed on October 27th of 2021 and informal solicitation was sent out in September of 2021 due to the garage being in such poor, in a poor state of disrepair. The garage was demolished and it has already been rebuilt. And rather than demolish the home, we went through a competitive process and one of the requirements for the process was that this home has to be an owner-occupied home. It cannot be a rental property. And RFP was posted February of 2022 for qualified firms to acquire the property. Two responses were received with Fox Valley Habitat for Humanity being selected. The project has experienced some delay due to some unforeseen and unexpected infrastructure needs inside the, inside the property and some supply chain issues. We are looking to extend the completion date from June 30th. Fox Valley asked for an extension through August of 2023. However, we're requesting that the extension is through October and we don't see any significant issues by allow, to the neighborhood by allowing this extension.
Questions? There being none?
Consent.
With no objections, item going consent. Madam Clerk, read the next item under New Business.
23-0469, A Resolution Amending the Original Contract with ESI Acquisition of Atlanta, Georgia for a Three-Year Agreement for Emergency Management Software Services in the Amount of $73,684.34.
Staff.
Consent.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Natalie Weisa, Emergency Management Coordinator for the city and I have with me Mr. Colin Prado. He is the newest Emergency Management Specialist for the office. We're coming up today to discuss upgrading a current software that we use, Web EOC. It is an incident management software. We could use it for day-to-day emergencies and operations. We can use it for daily watchboards, but we also mainly use this program during declared emergencies and disasters. It helps us track resources. It helps us make sure that missions are being accomplished when something happens. In 2020, we did purchase the software after the declaration of COVID and it helped us maintain the mission essential functions that we needed to get done to provide to the community. When we first initially bought this software, it was a base package so we could get off the ground running to be able to serve the City of Aurora and the community during however many years we were in COVID together. And it proved to be a great opportunity for us to collaborate and coordinate as, for as city departments and even with working with state, federal and our public health partners. Since Colin's come into the office, that is one of his assignments, is he's supposed to manage and utilize this Web EOC. So in the several months he's been here taking over the software, he has recognized that we are missing an opportunity to do better with this software in terms of public health, safety and welfare for Aurora. And so I'm going to turn it over to Colin and he's going to discuss what we get with this upgrade.
So. Go back. So the big part of it, with the functionality, with the upgrade, we can integrate into our own ArcGIS, so all the mapping software that we already currently use in the city and all that data can be imported now into Web EOC. So no matter what it is, what kind of disaster, everything is already in one spot and we don't have to manually add it in as needed. Inside of this, there's what are called boards and the board is what you work from. So if there's road closures, that's on one board. If there's shelters or medication, or medical sites that are for the public to go to, they're all on different boards. With the upgrade, the boards actually can talk to each other, so you can see multiple different information from different boards. On top of all that, we can make our own, so we can find what works best for us and the only emergency management agency, this is all they do with all their boards, which IEMA does use this software as well and they've used it for several years. I can't remember the exact year they started using, but they've been using it for several years and they use it for day-to-day and also track all their equipment, so that way when it's needed somewhere, they can track where it goes. With the upgrade as well, you get a slight user upgrade.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
These boards, is this something you did not have?
Did we have anything to emulate these boards in the current system that we have or is this something brand new?
So the boards, they have kind of the default boards that are made that are used by people throughout all the different states and counties and regions, but they are very, or not organic, they are as default as they come, so you kind of see how it makes you, it work for your agency or for us. So parts of the boards will work for us, but other parts of it may not apply to us, so it's just kind of empty space that-
Maybe generic?
Correct, yes, thank you for that. So they're very generic and it's kind of just to get the smaller agencies what they need to kind of start off with disasters. And the customization is so that we can make it one of your own.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So for the users, we are going for 50 active users, which means that any one disaster, 50 people at one time can be registered to that board. With that, there's an unlimited amount of actual login, so no matter what, we can have everyone that needs a login within the city can have the login and when it's needed, they can log in, so they can see what needs to be seen. That way, everyone can be trained up and can access it as needed, but only 50 active users at one time. If there is an incident, the 50 active users does not cap off, so we can still go over that and we will not be shut down from that because they understand that disasters are disasters and they evolve pretty rapidly. Part of this with the upgrade will be customized notifications. So with the users, depending on how you set them up as far as the admin level, so for example, for everyone that's sitting here, depending on what disaster is going on, if things reach certain thresholds, you'll get an automatic email notification just so you guys can stay in the loop and that goes for every level and every department. That way, when something happens that will affect them, it will clearly message them so that they are aware of everything that's going on. Now, for the integration collaboration side of it, as I said, IEMA uses it, FEMA uses it ever since 2012. They've, were one of the big components of Web EOC and getting up to how it is today. And as I mentioned, IEMA uses Web EOC for daily tracking of all their deployed assets and all their assets in general, so they know what's available when someone calls saying we need something. Other agencies that also use Web EOC is Chicago and Cook County. They are big proponents of this and they've also had Web EOC for multiple years. Part of the upgrade too, which, they don't have it officially yet because it's still in the final stages, but talking through our contact with Web EOC with the upgrade, it does allow us to actually have better integration with other agencies. So if something happens, we need to bring in either Cook County or IEMA or FEMA. The information sharing is a lot better and actually is included versus now, you'd have to have a separate program from them called Fusion to be able to actually integrate with other agencies. And with all this combined, just like IEMA, we can use this internally for our own tracking of anything we basically need. We can adapt it as we go along and as we see fit. So at that, kind of the main things.
Alderman Seville.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the 50 people that you mentioned, who would they be? Are they department heads, division heads, first responders?
So in the, yeah, in the planning phases in our office, we identify with all the department heads within the city, who is going to be a part of these EOC work groups for the tasks that are going to be assigned depending on the incidents that occur. So with the Alderman's Office, Rich and Shelley are directly connected to us. We have information sharing channels that are set up to go directly to them and to all of the other council as well. It is three levels deep for who is going to be identified by the department head from that department and specific divisions. It depends on the mission assignments that we need to achieve for the disaster or emergency and as to who is actually going to be put in that hot seat. We found out during COVID and then again during civil unrest, that the program that we had in place was not functional enough to bring everyone to that one web-based software. So we were having to do things on paper and backtrack. Unfortunately, we didn't have enough users and so it created a lot of duplicated effort. But by activating 50 user logins, getting those identified by department head and then working with me as the EOC coordinator and getting those people identified and put in that system is how it gets worked out.
Questions, Alderman Smith?
Yes, I'd like to follow up on Alderman Seville's question. So out of those 50 people from the Alderman's Office, that would be our Chief of Staff and Shelley and then they would disseminate the information to us. Is that what you were saying?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Yamas.
Thank you, just have a quick question. Still on the 50 user limit, limit, login limit that we have, if there was some type of disaster where we needed more than 50 people to log in at once, you said that we would be able to, but would there be some type of fee or fine associated with that?
No, they recognize- No, they recognize that in a disaster situation, as awesome of planners as we try to be, we cannot account for everybody that would potentially have to come to the table either during response and/or during recovery. So the way our EOP and functions work right now, we're laid out of twenty-five core functions that come directly from the city of Aurora government, from all of our departments and divisions that we have. We can account for maybe an approximate number of ten nonprofits and non-governmentals that would come in to assist us, but the fifty gives us the maximum users that we feel we will not go over unless it is extremely catastrophic.
So it, is it built into the agreement then if we were in a situation where we needed more than fifty logins, simultaneous logins? I understand that it fits in an emergency and we're just, we're responding, so a matter of hours, there's fifty-five users, but what if this is, this drags on for months or up to a year, something like the pandemic that we had? At what point would they cut us off or tell us that we need to start paying for more?
So the way that I was talking with Jane, who is our contact from Web EOC and our account manager, that if we recognize that we go over the fifty users, basically, a lot of it's good communication. We have a lot of great communication with her. If she notices or we notice that there's going to be an extended period of time that we need more users, then that would be approached at that time to see what the extended cost is, because they know that things absolutely advance at an unknown rate, but as you said, things can go on two, three, four months, and as them being the company, except for fifty users, but after the first month, they will be in contact with us and kind of let us know if there is going to be a charge or how they're going to adapt to that. But is the big part with them is the communication side of that, because they don't want to just see you see fifty-five users, not contact them, just kind of keep doing what you're doing. But they said they work with their customers because they understand that you can't plan for disasters.
So it's just up to their discretion then?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
And, go ahead.
Oh, no, if you had anything else.
No, I didn't have any. It's just, no, that's okay. And it's, the key word is the active user. So if we've, we've topped out at fifty active, we're going to try to monitor that right away and be on the phone with them. And they are a company that's been around for a long time, and they're, they are great to work with. I know Colin's every week on the phone with them, so it's that conversation and communication that's going to keep it going.
Okay, thank you.
Questions? Alderman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Natalie, great presentation, both of you. Just wanted to know, how did you come up with fifty? Fifty number of users?
That was just the package.
Why not less or more?
That's just the package. They have twenty-five years, fifty, and then it goes up by twenty-five.
Okay.
So that's just what they are.
And city our size, fifty, is decent according to you.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So at some point in the future, if we determine we need more than fifty, we'll just go to bigger package, is that correct?
Correct.
Questions?
Yes.
Alderman Buck?
Thank you. Yeah, you said it is going to help with communication with our fellow municipalities. Of course, we're in four counties, so that always causes an issue for you and your office. So tell me, will this product, will it help communication or with the weather event? So we know, how long ago was it? A year, a year and a half ago, we had a tornado hit in Aurora, the White Eagle portion of Aurora, although it's not titled Aurora, and our sirens did not go off. But however, neither did Naperville's, and it started in White Eagle, Aurora, it went to Naperville. None of those sirens in that area went off, and further down, they did go off, further down in Naperville. It was a very sudden event, you know, out of nowhere, I guess, but will this help our communication with Naperville, Will County, DuPont, you know, the different entities or tracking these things as we track them? Will this help in that communication and moving those things along?
So it can definitely open up those communication channels a little bit larger. We have actually several forms of communication right now, so we use Everbridge, which has been established to help communicate. We can share information directly from a daily watchboard that's going to come out of this new Web EOC upgrade that we're going to produce, but we also have formed better communication channels and methods from Kendall County all the way to Naperville over the last couple of years because of the extreme events of weather that have been coming up. At the end of the day, the local jurisdiction still has ownership on whether they're going to set the sirens off or not, and we take that guidance from National Weather Service, but we are going to share better that information in hopes to protect a larger population in the region.
Excellent, thank you.
Questions? All right. Alderman.
Just a quick question on the financials. If this is going to be a yearly outlay, one, does a software company offer a deal for five years with software upgrades along the way? Or two, can we look at potential funding out of AIMA?
This would not be covered as funding out of AIMA or FEMA through the grants that we have available to us. The way those grants work are they're an operational reimbursement, and later on, we could look at that, but I can tell you that right now, we're only getting sixty-one thousand dollars a year on our 2022 grant, so we would be expending those funds on one program. So we have to try to put that funding back to where it makes most sense and the maximum bang for that grant funding. In terms of the contract agreement, we previously set up the contract agreement like this with them. I feel like this is the preferred method. I do know that Mr. Jeff Anderson negotiated the contract, and he said he wanted to keep it as we did the last time, so that's why we went with the three-year and then annual renewal.
Consent?
No objections, I can go on consent. Madam Clerk, read the next item under new business.
Twenty-three, zero, four, seven, one, a resolution authorizing the sale of obsolete and surplus property.
Good afternoon. Derek Winston, Director of Public Facilities, seeking council approval to dispose of or sell the city's surplus equipment and vehicles using an online auction through JJK and Auctioneers.
Consent?
No objections, I can go on consent. But just to be clear, we've done this before, and this is the normal practice that we do.
Yes, Mayor.
Alderman, do you know?
A quick question. On the list is a, a 2012 aerial truck with low miles. Just curious why we were trading that one in?
That's a, that meter reading Alderman is actually in hours.
Hours.
Correct, interesting. Ten thousand hours is the benchmark, and he succeeded that.
Okay, thank you.
No objections, I can go on consent. Oh, I'm sorry, Alderman.
Um, that sounds the case for all the, I mean, these other ones are mileage, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so like the 2015, the first one, Chevy Colorado, one hundred and thirty-two on a pickup.
Correct.
That's.
That's mileage.
That's at end of life?
Yes. That, and corrosion.
Corrosion.
Right, there's numerous factors.
Can't do anything about corrosion.
Another question?
That was it. Thank you.
No objections, I can go on consent.
Thank you.
All right, Madam Clerk, read the next item.
Twenty-three, zero, five, zero, three, a resolution authorizing redevelopment agreement with a new Italian restaurant at thirty-one to thirty-three West New York Street known as Amore Meal.
Okay. Good evening, council members, Alderman, all the women, Mr. Mayor. We're here to seek the approval for a two-hundred-thousand-dollar advance to Roberto Avila and Erica Villanueva for the improvements to a new Italian restaurant called Amore Meal, where they are pioneering at thirty-one to thirty-three West New York Street. And this is going to be in the portion of the space most recently occupied by Gillerson's, which has been closed for the better part of the last two years. Amore Meal, and I'm going to let Roberto and Erica speak much more eloquently about it than me, but it pays homage to the essence of a great Italian restaurants in mid-century New York City. I'm thinking Frank Sinatra, where delicious, well-prepared food was served in an elegant, comfortable, and unpretentious style. Amore Meal will offer nightly music in a renovated piano bar Wednesdays to Sundays and offer customer hours, which are very friendly. And again, I'm going to let Roberto and Erica talk about their operations. In addition to the first floor, Amore Meal will occupy the entire ground floor, which I suspect is a space that nobody in the room has ever seen. It's raw space on the ground floor, and it's going to require and is requiring a complete renovation, electrical, HVAC, and John Curly is here to speak more about what is it entailing to take this space and bring it to life. We all know, Erica and Roberto, they are the owners and proprietors of the popular Altiro Restaurant on Stope across the street from the Paramount. That restaurant opened just before the pandemic started. Roberto is a former professional soccer player from Mexico, Erica, an interior designer. They come from humble beginnings. Roberto and Erica are now highly respected restaurateurs. We have seen many of the stories on TV clips about Roberto being interviewed, about his four restaurants and his highly innovative style of, and how he conceives his menu. He is the recipient of many awards. They've been recognized and voted top ten Fusion Top is Restaurant in Illinois by Yelp, twenty-twenty-two Best Mexican Restaurant by West Suburban Living, and then twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-three, the second-best restaurant in West Suburban Living. Altiro is a family business. If you don't see Roberto and Erica in the restaurant, often you see his daughter, his son-in-law, or other family members. I just want to stress that during COVID, they stayed open, and somebody who monitors their financials, they lost plenty of money during that time, but they did it because in keeping with the state regulations at that time, because they thought it was important, it was a new restaurant, and they had to establish themselves in the mind of the community, and their reputation has grown since then. In fact, that did pay off. When I did the original underwriting some three years ago, we estimated that Altiro would gross about seven-hundred thousand dollars a year. They are now grossing about a million one. The previous restaurant that was in that space had failed. We did a return on investment analysis for this group in April eleventh, twenty-twenty-three, and at that time, we talked about the return on investment that the city saw by investing in the Altiro Restaurant, and that was a twenty percent return to the city. Altiro has always served the Paramount, but also the greater community, and I think that's really a large reason for their success. We all know about the very, very high demand for restaurants related to the Paramount. I think the statistics are about sixty-six percent of people going to the theater want to eat in a restaurant before they go or after they go, and about only one-third of those sixty-six percent actually go and dine in Aurora. So I think it's clear that when you approved the Altiro incentive, you made a good decision, and we're asking you to take a look at it and do it again. We're never cavalier about coming to the council and asking for an incentive. And people ask, and I think the questions are well-taken, and, and we, we think it's their important questions. Why does somebody need an incentive, somebody who's a successful restaurateur? Roberto and Erica are not wealthy people. They take the money that they earn and they pour it back into the restaurants. It's very different, as we all know in our personal lives, between income and capital. The capital required to renovate this space is five-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. This money is very, very hard to borrow. Fortunately, Roberto and Erica were able to go to invest Aurora and personally guarantee a loan for two-hundred-seventy-five thousand dollars. In addition to that, Roberto has been leasing the space, continues to pay lease rent every month. At last look, it was well over fifty thousand dollars, but I believe that number is approaching close to a hundred thousand dollars until this restaurant gets opened, which we estimate three months from now. Roberto is very well-known for the community involvement that Erica and he has made a center point of their involvement in the community. Just, I think, a couple of weeks ago, Angel Reyna was here, soccer star from Mexico, that was Roberto, Roberto's doing, went to the schools, went to the Park District, did the seminars, highly popular. They're doing, always doing that kind of thing for the community, and we appreciate Roberto's not necessarily homegrown, but he really has made this city his town. This restaurant, this could have, this new concept could have opened anywhere. He's decided to make it here in Aurora, where he essentially is headquartered, is his operation. The last thing I just want to mention before I turn it over to Erica and Roberto, and then I'm going to come back to talk a little bit about the numbers, which are always a little bit more boring. Very often, when things change in a community, it's the result of some big thing that happens. I lived in New York City when Times Square was being renovated, new hotels that were supported by the, by the city. Maybe a new casino moves to an area, maybe a train stop. You think about the West Loop. People know the West Loop. The Green Line came in at Morgan. To me, that was a very significant thing. Very often, it's a big thing. I think what happens in Aurora, it's not the big thing. It's a lot of small things. And this, taking an old historic building and turning into a top-flight restaurant from somebody who has shown they could do it before, is one of those small things that we're going to think about in the future. I'm going to turn it over now, actually, I think we've got a video, and then I'm going to turn it over to Roberto and Erica.
Hello, my name is Roberto Avila. I'm a chef and owner to Altiro Group. Please come over to see the new restaurant, please. This is our first Italian restaurant for us, for Altiro Group. So we created Latin fusion cuisine before we opened this restaurant. I worked in the industry for about twenty-five years. So my first cuisine where I worked at, it's Italian. I tried to get the first Italian restaurant in Aurora. It's going to be really nice. We have a little like pasta, seafood, all the Big Saus and everything in the area. And so we have a really good wines, beer, cocktail salsa, too. So this place is beautiful. That's why we picked that one. We want to do like a little tables in here and all this area, a little booths in here, tables. So it's going to be a beautiful restaurant. So right now, we should try to finish this restaurant, but you know, it's a little harder for us right now, you know? Get a good experience with the food, the Italian food, and after, people, they can go downstairs at the basement, you know, and they can see, you know, what we're doing downstairs. So I'm going to show you in a few minutes. So it's not just the Italian restaurant. We're going to do downstairs, the speakey area, like a lounge area, it's going to be beautiful. We want to do piano bar in here. So we're going to try to bring from the community, like music on Wednesday through Sunday. You know, on Wednesday, maybe a jazz, Tuesday, maybe a piano, guitar on Fridays, band on Saturdays, Sundays are totally different. So we want to try to do different here. I know I'm really grateful to the community, Aurora community, you know, for the city because the city helped a lot to make this happen. I think we made it in here in Aurora, and in tough times, we did it in Altiro. The community supports a lot, and we make it. We have a really good council in here. We want to do like a people that come over after shows, after dinner, people that go downstairs and get, enjoy a different vibe, and we can sit about sixty to seventy people in here. So it's really good for the community to like, made it in here. So two concepts in here right away, you know, it's like a bit, the first floor is going to be the Italian restaurant, and this one is going to be like a speakey bar, like a lounge area. My name is Roberto Avila. I'm the owner from Altiro Group, and now it's going to be that one, Amore Meal Restaurant, Italian restaurant and lounge area. Thank you so much, guys. Hi, good afternoon, guys. How are you? My name is Roberto. I think a few people, they knows me. So talking about Altiro, so why Italian here in Aurora, right? So we don't have nothing Italian restaurants around in the area, and I worked in for like years, ten to fifteen years in Italian restaurants. So I started in the beginning with Italian people, so I know what I do with Italian cuisine. But in the beginning, I make it Altiro because I'm Mexican, I'm a Latin people, so I know what I do. I'm passionate with what I do, food and drinks and everything. But I started with Altiro, Latin fusion, because why? Because nobody believed me, right? How I can do Italian. And now I think it's the time I have my dreams come true, and I can do my, my best thing here in Aurora. I think it's going to be good for you guys, so. And sorry about, you know, I- And sorry about, you know, I cut a little bit because there's something with that passion I have with my wife and my kids all the time. Restaurant business is very hard, guys, so it's not for everyone. I know a lot of people, they knows about how we're doing the restaurant business in the pandemic and everything, but we have a really, really good concept in here. It's not just make a restaurant here in Aurora, it's make it happy to the community, make it jobs, bring some people. We do a lot of stuff here in Aurora. We want to try to bring some different people to here to grow. It's not just restaurant, bring some for the community, for the kids, for the moms, dads, and everything. So, and again, you know, I'm really happy to make it the restaurant happen because you guys love it. So it's my wife and I, we're working hard for this, and I think it's a great opportunity for opening Amore Mio here in Aurora. And if you got any questions, I can ask, you know, ask me questions about how it's going to be menus and everything, I'm open to you guys can do that. Thank you.
Well, I'm very happy that we're getting an Italian restaurant here.
You're Italian, right?
Yes. Thank you for that. So I have a couple of questions because
Yes, sir.
The previous owner of that there, I had noticed a couple of times over the years that, and this is before COVID, that they advertised they're going to be open certain hours, and then when you go there, when they're supposed to be open, they weren't open. So that's a concern, that if we're going to advertise, especially downtown Aurora, if we work around the Paramount, that when people go there, and we're supposed to be open till 10, we're going to be open till 10.
Sure.
And I know from your business at Altiro, that's not a factor, but I just wanted to bring that up because I saw that the other place.
Yeah, it's so we want to start to open on Wednesday through Sunday. So okay, no, no, the first level is going to be Italian restaurant, and the second level is going to be like a lounge area, like a speakey bar. So we want to try to bring some people in the beginning, when people they before the before the show and after the show. So live music Wednesday through Friday and Saturday. So it's the days, you know, and Sunday says the days, you know, the Paramount, it's open and closed. So, and it's nothing like that, you know? With the concept we have, what we're talking, Mr. Debo, it's like a something like my wife and I, we love to all the restaurants here in Chicago, New York, Boston. So we like to receive restaurants like like this. And we have a really good, really good concept to bring to Aurora. So I think that's going to be good for for the community to bring some people to the Italian restaurant, and after that, people they stay here in Aurora. And we just us, you know, I always share with everybody, you know, like they can go to 57 Society, or they can go to St. Island or suburban craft. So I think let's bring some more people, let's stay more people in Aurora.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question for Mr. Debo. Thank you. The economic development loan was $220,000. I think you mentioned $275,000.
Well, no, so let me just clarify what that is. So they had already received a Finish Line grant of $75,000, so that they have gotten in 2022. We're proposing here $200,000. And I just want to give you the quick, can I do that, the quick economics? And when I started, I called it in advance, and I don't want to do any fancy footwork here, I just want to explain. When we were doing the original deals, the historic renovations, we used to have these loans, and then we had forgivable loans. And those loans really did go away at some point. It had a lot to do with the structures and so on. This is really not a forgivable loan. This truly is an advance. The first point is, but for us doing this, we would not get this restaurant, and we would not get these revenues. So if this restaurant does about $1,005,000, let's just use a round number like that, and the city gets approximately 4%, which would be about $60,000 a year. And to be fair, rather than assuming that there was no restaurant there, we assumed, let's say a Gillerson's was there, and Gillerson's averaged something like $500,000. They had one year they did better, some other years worse, but let's say $500,000. So at $500,000, the city was earning about $20,000. So one, I think conservative, but very fair way to the tax payer to think about this, is here we had a restaurant that should generate $60,000 for the city versus the 20, or a net $40,000. So if we get a net $40,000 for five years, we pay ourselves back this $20,000. Or we could look at it the way we did on the return on investment analysis that we did for you. $40,000 a year divided by $200,000 is a 20% return on our money. So you could look at it either in terms of a payback over five years, and if you even you put interest on it, maybe it's six years or six and a half years. But we did what we put a provision in here, and we've been doing this more in the in the last couple of deals that we've proposed, is that for some reason, these projections are not met, then the entrepreneur has to pay the city the difference between what they thought they were going to do and what they actually do. So I believe the RDA says that within eight years, if we do a true-up, and we have not received that money, then the city will get the money back. So what is this, a loan, an advance, a grant? I it's hard to say what it is. We called it an advance, but at the end of the day, it's money that we will get back one way or the other.
And before we go, Alderman Smith is
One
Go ahead, go ahead.
One more question, just related to this as well. In the RDA, on page two, it says city grant $200,000, and later it says city is prepared to loan the developers. So if you could add the clarification?
I just figured this out in the room next door. I got to put it back in the RDA.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Just to be clear, you know, I'm talking about RDA, and to follow up on Alderman Franco's question. In the RDA specifically says that the restaurant has to be open six days per week, and will be open six days a week, and must be open during Paramount shows, as well as music from Wednesday to Sunday. Is that correct? That's stated in the RDA?
Correct.
All right. Alderman Smith.
Yes, thank you. A couple of different things. Mr. Debo, you started out with a very important point that I think I would like to say again, with the all the people that we have that come to Paramount, only 33% of those people, I believe was the number you used, are actually eating and dining in the city of Aurora.
Correct.
This is a situation of build it and they will come. We're looking at this man who is not a new new man to the city of Aurora, who has a proven record that he can run a successful business. And I believe that this is a situation where build it and they will come, because we know what you can do in a restaurant. We know how successful you can be, and I believe the same success will carry through to this restaurant. And thank you for for putting your heart and your love and your family into this restaurant, because this is the type of thing Aurora needs. We cannot expand our city without providing the amenities for people to come and enjoy it. And sometimes it's which what comes first, the chicken or the egg? But I believe in you because you have proved what you can do. You stayed open through COVID. You provided paychecks for your employees. You have done a good job for our city. So the advance, from my perspective, is well deserved. It will come back to the city, and I commend you for being here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much. About this is, you know, Paramount season, you know, is huge for everywhere, you know, for all the restaurant business. But I'm so glad, you know, I'm here in Aurora, too, and all the restaurants, because we are, we have our own followers, too. So people that come over here to Geneva, Wharton, Aurora, Naperville, Plainfield. So it's not just the Paramount. I know it's a huge percentage, 60%, 60, 66, but I'm so glad, you know, people they they follow Altiro, and now they want to follow Amore Mio, because people they start calling me, hey, Roberto, when you open the new restaurant, when you open the new concept. So we're going to focus to obviously, and Aurora location, to bring some more people for everywhere. It's not just for Aurora, for the Paramount. That is where we're going to focus, too. So, thank you.
Alderman Lesh.
Thank you. I want to thank staff for putting in the consideration about the hours into the RDA and the time that you put into this. My question is about Section 7D titled sufficient funds. And it basically reads that until the forgivable loan is repaid in full, that they collectively have and will have at least $1 million in liquid assets, and will maintain liquid assets equal to or greater to the outstanding balance. I guess my question is, if there's $1 million in assets, why are we footing the $200,000 additionally? And then secondly, I just want to sort of underscore that I see that there's another one of these deals for a restaurant here coming in the next finance committee meeting. My longer concern here, my long-term concern, is that our shingle out there is saying that the only way you can do business in Aurora is if we're handing, you know, with an incentive. So, thank you.
I'm going to just look at what you said. What section are you talking about?
7D. Section 7D.
And while I'm looking for that, that's actually a little confusing to me. The
The question is
I'm going to just look at that, but the
If there's $1 million in assets
Hold on a second. He got, I'm thinking it's
Yeah.
Sure.
7D, I can't, all right, I got to, I got to look at that. But let me just comment on the on the second point first. The goal here has been, has always been to have a self-sustaining market. We only get involved when there's a gap, when there's a need. When is that moment? It's like I said at the end, you know, you know, sometimes you do a big deal and things change quickly. But in this city, it's incremental. The rents have gone up slowly, and you could watch it, you could see what's happening. We're not saying we need $550,000. We said we need $200,000 plus the $75,000. So what the goal is, and what you've seen in our last couple of RDAs, is each time we do it, let's say the last, the 110 cross, which I think you were talking about, the TIF, that 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 incentive is much lower than the incentive we did for, say, Urban Equity or the Hobbs Building. Because the goal, as the rents go up, as the revenues go up, the need decreases. We would love not to have to come before you for doing this, but we need to do it because if we didn't do this, if we didn't do this, this restaurant would not open. I'm confused about this thing about the, what section, seven? I'm on page
Page 14.
Page 14, D, sufficient funds.
Well, I will say that, you know, we might have to look at that paragraph a little closer. They don't have $1 million. I think this is kind of a little boilerplate that we have that, so it really meant over the period of time that they're doing this restaurant, that they will try to maintain their assets, that they will not move their assets to other places. I think this this is extremely, I've seen their financials, and they do not have $1 million in liquid assets. So we could make that change.
Alderman Seville.
Yes, Mayor, I'm curious. In the presentation, it talks about outdoor dining, and I was wondering how many tables and chairs does that add to the restaurant? And are they locating them in the front, or in the lower level, or on the deck, or?
You know, I might ask Trevor to come up and just talk a little, because we do have this, the Piney issue in terms of the rebuilding of the deck and so on, so, which is sort of fluid, but, Trev, you want to just?
Thank you, David. Trevor Dick, Assistant Director in the Mayor's Office of Economic Development. Yes, the Piney Street, something I've been working on for several years with the Engineering Department. For those who are familiar with the area, the deck is on city property. The deck went up maybe 20, 30 years ago. The goal is to improve that decking. We've been talking to each property owner for, boy, probably three years now, and as part of this agreement, we've been working with Vernon Olivia, the owner of the property. And part of this RDA will include the city's right to either demolish or replace that decking behind their building, which has been a goal of the city for quite some time. So we're very happy with that. The current licensed area that'll be attached to the agreement is the existing deck area now, because the current Piney Street has to have that five-foot sidewalk for ADA purposes. So it's really limited to that area behind the decking. Gillerson's used to have, if I had to, if I remember, it was about 14 to 20 seats in the back. I right now assume that'll be probably what the number will be on the decking on the Piney Street side. In the future, if we reimagine that area, which the planner and me would love to figure out what that could be back there, maybe that gets enlarged, but right now, we're just focused on the licensed area to maintain that ADA accessibility. I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, I think it does. I'm just wanting to see if this is part of the agreement, how much is going to add to the the whole development and what that's going to mean for the success and also the revenue, and and also the expansion of it. If it's outdoor dining succeeds in one area, chances are the neighbors will be doing it as well and create this whole ambiance in that area of the city.
And Alderman, while we were, while you just responded, I instantly thought about what we did for Gillerson's during COVID, and closed down a portion of Piney Street and allowed a lot more outdoor dining. So to your question, I think that's something we could look into if the owner and the operations want to do that again. We closed off half of Piney Street, if you remember, with barricades, and allowed Gillerson's to put up a lot of seating, which they really used as an amenity, had outdoor movies, music and stuff. So now that I'm starting to think about it, I think we definitely like to promote that again if if the owner was willing to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Question. Alderman, Ms. Apples.
Thank you, Mayor. I really want to thank the Mr. Avila, and I have a question for you, but I love what you said, bringing people to Aurora, and the more people you bring, the more they stay in Aurora. And it seems like you have proven ability to keep and attract people and Paramount guests to Aurora as well. My question, though, is for staff, I don't know, would have maybe Mr. Debo. Being a person, I think, right now on city council, I personally know how much, probably more, the most experienced person, knowing how much prices for construction have escalated from a personal level, but I don't want to speak for myself. Can you tell us how old the Finish Line grant is? And because right now, my thought is, $75,000 went a long way when it was first instituted. And prices for a lot of things have doubled or more than doubled in a very short time with COVID. Can you please explain to us how old that Finish Line grant is, and how much value it's lost in regards to an incentive for people in downtown Aurora?
You know, I might ask for some help with some people have been here longer than I am, but so there's a couple of points to question. The Finish Line grant is meant to do that exact thing, finish line. So by definition, that grant is supposed to provide up to 20% of a finished product after the product, you know, has really been spending some of their money. So to your point on these large deals, the maximum is $100,000. 20%, that would be a $500,000 thing. So the $75,000 was close to the maximum. I think we're looking at all the grant programs now in terms of improving them. There was a facade grant, this Finish Line grant. So we're looking at what to do, and I think we've got to maybe evaluate it. Again, the goal is not to always be giving grants out and so on.
What I want you to help me out with to explain is that the $75,000 doesn't carry you as far as it used to when the city first instituted.
Yeah, it really doesn't.
That's part of the challenge right now. If we do give Mr. Avila $75,000 Finish Line grant, it's not enough to, under the same premise, to get help get him over the, over the hump.
Well, that's why we're here, you know, because we thought it would be enough.
I just want to make sure.
I think that's a great point. And, you know, we read about it in the papers about what's going on in the economy, but it's really incredible when you're in the in the dirt, and you're working with these developers, and you're seeing, I mean, there's a developer I'm working with, I'm not going to name the developer, a large developer, and one of the projects coming out. And he said to me the other day, he said, David, I can't get a final price. I get a final price, and then I get another price, and I get another price, and they're trying to get a loan, they're trying to get, so it's very difficult. The number I have heard often is 30% to directly answer your question, that everything has gone up in the last year at least 30%. But it it's not just the 30%, it's the uncertainty. And that's why when the city steps in, and this is a case, why is this restaurant half-built? It's half-built because the cost just kept going up. And then, as you know, being an architect, when you go into one of these old buildings, and you go into that second floor, and you really see what it needs, the magnitude of the dollars, and again, John Curly could speak a lot more than I can about the magnitude of what needs to be, but it's just been very high.
And just one more, just thought for any hours to be modified from mutually agreed, as we usually agreed upon. And just one more, just thought, uh, for any hours to be modified from originally agreed, as we usually agreed upon. Personal experience, when it was a sit-down restaurant, tablecloth restaurant, had visited with, with friends from out of town, or tried to visit before it was Gillerson's, and showed up about 10 minutes to 10, and they told us the kitchen was closed because they closed at 10. So, uh, a little bit of consideration can be given on, on show nights, especially if the show is a little bit longer, is that, you know, make sure that our patrons at Paramount can come and, and sit down for a nice meal, even if it's a limited menu, because they didn't even provide a limited menu back then, so.
No, so we, we wanna do like.
And don't take it personal, I mean, we are, we are encouraged to.
Yeah, it's fine, I understand that.
To bring the community and to bring guests to the shows and.
For sure.
To bring guests and to pay, and personally pay for tickets for them to come to the show and out of town. They come on a Friday night, and it's, it just happened a while back, many years ago, and before it was Gillerson's, it was a sit-down tablecloth restaurant. It's just, it was really, um, it was disheartening to, to, you know, get excited and to show off our town to our friends and the Paramount and the restaurants that were there. We couldn't even have a limited menu with, with a, with a bottle of wine perhaps, you know, so if it could be a stadium, just keep a mind on that, city staff, that's all, from personal experience. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
And good luck, Mr. Avila.
Thank you, but, you know, that one is not gonna be tablecloth, it's gonna be like a marmer.
Oh, it doesn't, no.
It's gonna be a nice restaurant and.
I'm just trying to date it by saying that because.
Yeah, so I wanna.
It's part of restaurant role back in the day.
Yeah, and not, or ours can be like, if it's 10 to 10, or 10 to 12, or 10 to 2, it's gonna be constantly. I'm not a kind of person like, I say, "Okay, we're closed" because it's no business. If you don't, that's, that's why my, my business grew at Altiro, because we will always keep, keep and keep and keep, you know, the business constantly. That's the best way, when you're passionate, what are you doing? Love and passion, so you still open. People, that's why people like, that's why we wanna focus and wanna do this, this concept, so. Italian restaurant, you know, on a dinnertime, and after that, like music for people that you stay around, so.
Consent.
Alderman Yamas.
If I may, Alderman Smith. Thank you. Just a quick point, but I do wanna make some comments, too. On the RDA, I don't remember hearing this during the presentation, that there is a 5.5% interest on the forgivable loan. Is that accurate, or is that a, it may need to be changed in the RDA?
Yes, so the math of it, when we say we've got to get paid back, it includes the 5.5%. When I was just doing some quick and dirty math, I said, look at it, but, and then I said, it's like six and a half years. The reason is, it's because of the 5.5% interest, so he's not gonna be off the hook until we get paid the $200,000 and the 5.5% annual.
Okay, I thought that was an important point that we should make clear for residents, so they know, too, that it's, we're getting something more than the, that back, um. I'm sorry, my, oh, I'm sorry, I sat down, I say, see, it's perfectly fine, I just wanted to kind of remind you of a very honest conversation we had a few years ago at Altiro. It was now kind of embarrassing to look back on, but it was a very honest, late-night conversation that we had about the downtown, your restaurant, other nearby restaurants and the Paramount, and how you weren't catering just to the Paramount crowd, and that really was my criticism, that was my misunderstanding of your restaurant at the time. I didn't like that idea. You, you set me straight and you've proved it since then, so I, I wanna recognize that and thank you for your hard work here in Aurora. Anytime I come downtown for any event, you guys are, have your doors open, or you have a table set up, you know, on Stolper, anywhere nearby downtown, so you guys are definitely committed to, to Aurora, so I wanna thank you. And I'm really looking forward to this new restaurant, as I'm sure a lot of us here are. I know Franco's wanted an Italian restaurant for quite some time, and, you know, if we're gonna give anyone the opportunity, I want to give it to you, because you guys have proved yourself like the other restaurants. When things were tough a few years ago with COVID, there was, you know, another restaurant that just closed their doors on day one. You guys did it, and like you mentioned earlier, as difficult as it was, you, you weathered the storm, you stuck around, invested in, in yourselves and the business, and more importantly, in the city here, so we definitely appreciate that and we want to make sure that this new restaurant is as successful. Thank you.
Alderman Warman.
Yes, thank you. First and foremost, I've never met this gentleman or his wife in my life, and I can just tell hearing you speak, your passion that you, you have for the restaurant business.
Thank you, sir.
People asking about when you're gonna close, open and close and things like that, I think you stayed open through COVID. 110% proves what you're gonna do. I guarantee that there were nights you stood in, there were more employees than you had customers, but guess what? You still stayed open, you still paid your employees. Because in order to be successful, you gotta ride the hills, the valleys out, and you did just that, and I commend you for doing that, because I'm in the restaurant business as well, and I know what it takes to be successful, and it's hard work, and I can see that with you. I just want to, a couple of clarifications, so the loan that we're doing, I mean, he's guaranteed the EDI alone, he's basically guaranteeing this advance that you said, outside of the Finish Line Grant, I don't know where that is, but he's got so much skin in the game, it's, it's.
Yeah, he's, he's guaranteed the first loan and then he's guaranteed our loan, so, but yeah, and that's why I'm sure it's not sure what to call it, but yes. It's not a technically loan, I don't have a lien on the property, but yes.
And then a couple more points, and then we'll move on here, so, uh, taking it down to the studs, basically, this, this building, right? Down to the studs, basically, and rebuilding it, uh, so it's almost like a brand-new restaurant, correct?
Totally.
Yeah, uh, which I think is amazing, and I think it's, I'm sure it's gonna look great. And I'm sure this'll come up if it hasn't already. This is something we tried to do with Gillerson's and other places that have been in there, we tried to do similar things, whether it's this exact deal or something like that, but we tried with other, uh, the previous occupant and other people to try to do this exact same thing with no success. So we didn't single him out because he's just a guy, or we just picked him because he wanted to do it, correct? There's no, this is something we tried with everybody, or other people that wanted to do it anyway, correct?
This deal was done, I mean, he negotiated directly with Vernon Livia, I mean, we came in kind of after the fact. This was, they did the deal, did the math, and then, uh, quite frankly, Roberto said, "I, I just can't do the first floor alone." I, I just kind of like what happened with Craft Urban, where they were originally gonna do just one floor, and then they said, "No, no, we think we could do it, we're gonna take those apartments," and again, the council redid the deal. It's the same kind of thing, once he got in there, he said, "No, no, if I'm gonna do this, I'm gonna go all the way, and I'm gonna go and do it."
110%.
And I think that's, you know.
I, I commend you for doing that and, and I wish you guys both.
It was him, all of them.
Nothing but the best, so.
I'm gonna have Chris Minnick just comment.
Mr. Minnick.
And then, and what I'd like to do, if it's okay with you, Alderman Lash, I've got some proposed language. I really do think that was some of the boilerplate, you know, the doubling of the $500,000 to make sure there's liquid assets, but I, I think there's a simple way, and I'm gonna just repeat it, and maybe, um, Mr. Veenster, if I do that, maybe we could vote on the amended language.
We can take care of the amended language.
But I, I'd like to, I'd like to state what I think the amended language should be, if I, if I, but I want Chris Minnick to come up first. Can I do that? Okay.
And, and, thank you, Mr. Debo, and that's actually what I was going to address with my remarks. I think that staff would propose we would simply remove the third paragraph from that Section 7D. There are some additional, um, languages and provisions that do guarantee that the developer shall maintain sufficient funds to handle and be able to pay for any project costs that might come up. That would be particularly important in light of the discussion that we just had in terms of how you can't seem to get a final price on any of these projects as you move through. The, the costs are always changing, and additionally, I think it's worthy of note that we're coming in kind of at the back end of this, after the developer has already put in a significant amount of money, as we have, as we had talked about. So, uh, I think that removing perhaps that third paragraph, that third boilerplate paragraph that Mr. Debo had talked about, uh, would satisfy the, the concern as well as still provide those protections that are important to the city, that we do get a functioning restaurant at the end of the day.
Mr. Debo, did you want to say?
I think that's, if we could do that, that would be the best. I think what Mr. Minnick said is the best way, if that's okay with the council.
As described by the CFO, that is a policy decision that this council is able to make. I don't see anything in here that, if we were to strike that particular paragraph in its entirety, that it would have any impact on the other provisions, so this would be something that could be surgically removed if the council so desired.
Point of order.
On Lash.
Would, would it be then someone to make a motion to remove Section 7D second, a vote? And that would take care of that?
There, that would be one way to do that, certainly that would get the sense of the committee of the whole. The other potential way of doing that would be to address it by the time it comes to City Council a little bit later, and then at that point, present the revised document that has that paragraph removed. So it's really a matter of what the committee of the whole and the city council's comfortable doing, doing.
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Franco.
Can I make a suggestion? We put it on unfinished, then when it comes back completely done, regrouped, taken out, the whole thing, we can just vote on it independently next week? Oh, wait, that would be tonight.
That's later tonight.
That's tonight.
Yeah. Alderman, it does still provide some time.
Right, it still provides some time, but I, I think it's the cleanest and easiest way, then we could actually.
If provided that's the sense of the committee of the whole, that that's the change to be made. It sounds like exactly the consensus.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor. Alderman.
Roberto, um, my question is, how many floors do you wanna have in Amore Mio?
On the first floor, in the beginning, might be a five in the kitchen with me, six. And, uh, outside is gonna be two bartenders on the first floor, and, uh, four servers, two bussers, and, uh, maybe two hostess and my wife.
So you wanna be in the Amore Mio and not be in Altiro?
So, no, there's a lot of different people, I don't wanna mix it up, people.
Oh, okay.
So it's gonna be different people, yeah. And downstairs, it's different because downstairs is gonna be just, uh, bites, you know, for food, because we need some food for drinks. Gonna be cocktails and wine and everything, so downstairs is just bartenders and, uh, maybe silver cocktails, yeah. Maybe downstairs about four and six in the night, especially weekends, maybe, you know, it's, it's, uh, more, more stuff. Altiro, it's about 80, 88 people who can feed, and we have five people in the kitchen, and that's me and Esperada, six. Have a two bartenders, eight, two hostess, ten, and we have, uh, fifteen and five, six, 16 people, six servers or five, and two bussers, so maybe about 17 people, and just in, in Altiro. So we wanna pretend to like 16 people, 15 to 16 to 20 in Amore Mio, yeah.
I wish you the best. In the future, you thinking to put it maybe ballet parking?
Uh, where, in Amore Mio? Yeah, if it's possible, yeah, so I think it's a great location, I love it because, you know, the New York, New York Street is beautiful. I remind me, you know, when I go to New York and it's beautiful, La Jolla, and the best, I mean, my wife, she does a great, you know, she's a designer, interior, and you guys see what she's doing, it's gonna be really nice. And obviously, yeah, if you, you know, if you, it's possible, we can do ballet parking, we have, you know, the parking there is better for us. So I think it's gonna be a great addition to the city, and I think we can, we can consider that one, do.
Yes, please.
Especially if we can be partners with the guys in front of Bay Doyle, the new space, so we can share, you know, the ballet parking, yeah.
Okay, what I think.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mayor. We're gonna, Alderman Bug.
Thank you. First, I, I take great pleasure in correcting Alderman Franco. We have a fantastic Italian restaurant, the address is 2460 South Yola Road, Maciano's Pasta Raya.
Yes.
Get the chicken parm, you're good to go. You'll be the second great Italian restaurant in Aurora. First, second.
Okay, I wanna be the first.
All right.
The first is downtown.
You'll be the second here.
The first one downtown.
Downtown, yeah.
Alderman Lash brought, yeah, you'll be the first one downtown. Alderman Lash had a good point, and Mr. Debo's brought this up many times, and I think it's important. So we don't do these deals for restaurants coming in on Route 59 or Orchard or those other places. We understand we have historic buildings, and we have, understand we have very special, uh, problems, conditions to overcome, to put in a new or, you know, in this place, Gillerson's was there before and they're gone, but to revamp, revitalize, repurpose, reimagine that space. So, more specifically, can you tell us, you know, everyone enters from New York, so that's what you see. Tell us what we have to do down below. What is our $200,000 grant going to? What is happening down below, and what, uh, what will we have afterward?
Thank you, Alderman, and I'm John Curly, Chief Development Services Officer for the City of Aurora. If you recall, um, it's more than 15 years ago before the basement's been used in that space. Gillerson's did not use the basement, uh, of this space at all. What we found in getting into the project was a mechanical system that was in complete decay. All of the mechanical equipment downstairs needed, downstairs needed to be replaced. There was plumbing issues, including the need for an enlarged water service in the space due to additional, um, fixtures that were being added. There are additionally, um, kitchen remodeling, actually a little more extensive than I would have thought on the front end, but with the menu changes and the condition of the equipment that Roberto and Erica found when they got there, there were some pretty extensive kitchen renovations required on the first floor as well. So the pictures, I thought, showed it pretty well, it's really extensive remodeling of the entire lower floor. And that's really, um, kind of to expand what David had mentioned earlier, and also on what Alderman Seville had asked earlier, this, that downstairs adds 60 seats to what Gillerson's was doing in, in the existing scenario, all inside, so year-round.
Okay, thank you. And, and lastly, Mr. Debo, um, really, we're in new territory, hasn't happened since I've been on council. So a, a deal of this size, unfortunately, finance did not meet, um, a week and a half ago. So we have this deal here today, uh, at COW, did not go through committee. A deal of this size, uh, and then we're going to push it on to, uh, council tonight.
It, it did go to committee, you just didn't have a quorum there.
Right, we did, we didn't vote, yeah, that's, yeah. So normally, uh, you know, normally, you know, we look at these things for three weeks. Really, we, we, powers that be, we condensed it down to basically one night. We don't normally do things that way, like I said, we've never done it that way since I've been on council over a decade. If we held this here till next committee of the whole, two weeks from now, or, actually, a week from now, because 4th of July, a week from now, what if any impact would, a, a week, and then council the following week, so two weeks? What impact would that have on this if we held?
I think it'd not be good, um, for a lot of reasons. One, if you just go ahead in terms of, you know, trying to get it opened for the Paramount season and, and as close as they could. You know, when we bring something to you, and when we brought it to the finance committee, I mean, there were only two people here, but we were ready to have this conversation. And, um, when we, we're pushed often by the entrepreneurs to get something in front of you, but we don't do that unless we're ready. So we put these people through a grinder in order to get here and to be able to speak with confidence about the, you know, it's funny, I was gonna thank all the staff from the mayor and Alex and John and Trevor and Morgan and everybody who spent, I mean, this, these are hundreds, hundreds of hours that go into this analysis and so on, to make sure that there's... So I think two weeks would not be good, because he's ready to go, and he's got contractors, and you saw when he was walking around on Saturday, those were people there working. I was here on Saturday, there were seven people working, they gotta get paid. So, I, I don't think it's a good idea, and I respectfully understand why you would think that way, but the last thing we ever wanna do here is jam something through. We will, we will not bring it in and take the heat from our entrepreneurs until we could do it.
Oh, no, and I, I, you know, I know you don't think it that way, and that, you know, it's, it's what happened, 4th of July, you know, that's the reason we have COW and council back-to-back tonight. It's just the way, you know, the stars fell. You know, we, of course, answer to the citizens, um, you know, maybe they can all come up with their questions between now and 6 whatever, when we do this at council in, in a half hour. You know, we try and throw these things back to them to get their input, at least over a week. And a lot of times, they have good input. You know, and like I said, this is no small agenda item. We have all these agenda items, but most of them are disappointments, so they're not as big. So.
You know, we're gonna go ahead and put this on unfinished, uh, and we'll be able to take a vote on it or make whatever motions we'd like as we get to the council portion of it. But let, let me just say, and I agree with, and, and responding to Alderman's bug, Alderman Bug's concern that this, you know, was all on one night, having committee of the whole and, uh, and city council in the one night based on, falling on a holiday on 4th of July, last Tuesday, falling on a holiday. And, and it did actually go to council, but there wasn't a quorum. There wasn't a quorum because one of our members of finance had a, an emergency that she had to tend to, and another member of our finance committee passed away. So that hasn't happened, I agree with, with, with you, Alderman Bug. In the 10 year, in the 10 years you've been here, the 16 that, that I've been around as well, but we have to make do with the circumstances that we have. to make do with the circumstances that we have. You know, there are detractors that will, will always say, that aren't in our positions, or definitely not in my position as mayor, that say that there's always a better way to do things. We could do things like this, we can do things like that. There's always going to be that, you know, that, that armchair quarterback, that Monday morning quarterback after the game is, after the game is over. The reality, Alderman Lash, the questions you have and the ideas you have about development aren't new, and as a matter of fact, they've been practiced by leadership here in Aurora for decades, as a matter of fact, generations. And because of it, we have not been able to progress here in our downtown. As Mr. Curley, Director of our, one of our major departments here, development, said, this particular area of the basement, nothing has been done there for 50 years, 50 years. You can go to the Hobbs, nothing's been done there for 60 years, but it's done now. Go to the terminal, nothing had been done there for 70 years, but it's done now, in this administration. So, our detractors are always going to say, there's a better way, but the reality is, it hadn't happened before. It's not happening right now. And then the question becomes, you know, why do we offer incentives? Well, these incentives are investments in ourselves. Why do we expect that anyone would invest any money in our community unless we're willing to invest in ourselves? This is an investment with a return, guaranteed returns, and if they don't, if this return doesn't come, and we know they will, these owners of these properties, this particular case, will, will make good on it and make sure that they pay us back that money. But, based on the experience, based on the, the, the background, based on the fact that this, that this gentleman here we're talking about, Roberto Villa, is very successful in Aurora already, and already doubled the value of the restaurant that he currently has, and he's done it through COVID, this is exactly what we want in our downtown. Now, we can go back to the old days of doing things, where, like, the old leadership says, well, we're just going to wait till somebody comes, knocks on our door, and brings a restaurant, Italian restaurant to our downtown Aurora. Guess what? We're going to be waiting another 50 years. But, if we do this right, and we've got talented staff that'll make sure we do it right, we get a return on our investment, and we get a gift that keeps on giving, year after year. We, we attract a half, a million people, 500,000 people in our downtown for the Paramount season alone, and, and 70% of them don't eat in Aurora. Why? Because we don't have any place for them to eat. So, you're right, Alderman Lash, there are going to be more restaurants that are going to be coming through, and we're going to be talking about more incentives, and we're going to be talking about investing in our community, because it had, especially in our downtown. And Alderman Bugg made a, made a great point. You know, when we go out to 59, Cross Street from Naperville, we don't have to talk about these same types of incentives. You know, maybe, over on Orchard, you know, when we get Buffalo Wild Wings and Chili's, we don't have to talk about these same incentives. But when we talk about our downtown, that has been dead for decades, we have to talk about these types of incentives. We have to. When we talk about bringing large developments to this community that we have never seen before, we've got to be talking about bridging that gap that, that Dave Debo always talks about, to make sure that those developers that are willing to invest, those restaurateurs that are willing to invest, you know, they, they get their return on their investment as well as we do. All we're doing is helping our success along a lot quicker than the 50 years that this, half of this building is set empty. So, as my detractors and some of the Alderman, they may not agree with how this administration uses economic, our economic development philosophy that has clearly been working, that's your opinion, that, that's your right, you know, and as I say, that's not new. The leadership has been doing that in Aurora for generations, and we see the result, nothing, before we start doing it the way we're doing it now. So, we're going to put this on unfinished, and as, you know, we vote on, on, on this particular item, just think about what we're going to have in a new restaurant, what we'll be able to offer to people, new people coming downtown that are his followers, that are coming to this new restaurant. And, and think about, you know, the direction we're going in Aurora, and investing in ourselves. Ma'am Clerk, we're going to put that unfinished call the next time.
230502, a resolution approving the appointment of Martha Patchkey as Director of Innovation and Strategy.
Consent?
No objections, I'm going consent.
230525, a motion authorizing and directing the Chief Human Resources Officer to execute a settlement agreement on behalf of the city and workers' compensation claim, 1-888-39814.
Consent?
No objections, I'm going consent.
230526, a resolution approving the appointment of Joshua Ream as Director of Development Services.
With no objections, I'm going consent. That concludes new business. I will read a quick mayor's report, and then we will close and get ready for city council. You know, tonight, I want to take a moment to acknowledge one of the most dedicated employees who passed away this week, Christie Bolt, who was our central services supervisor who worked with the City of Aurora for the last 24 years. To know Chris was like, was to like him. He always had a smile and a positive attitude, no matter the task at hand. When we honored him and his team last October for National Constodian Appreciation Day, he was very emotional, at, you know, at even the thought that we would take the time to recognize him and the hard-working men and women in his department. At that time, Chris had recently returned to work from his battle with cancer. He was very open about, open about his diagnosis and his fight to beat the diagnosis. Often the first one at the office, the last one to leave, Chris would keep the same optimism every day with each person he greeted along the way. We ask that you pray for Chris's family, staff, and colleagues during this difficult time. Let us take a moment of silence for Mr. Chris Bolt. You know, it seems like that has been the theme for the last few weeks. Since we last met, we had, laid our dear Alderwoman, Shakita Hardburns to rest, she was, she had a beautiful send-off from the horse-drawn carriage to the home-going celebration, to her private burial. We continue to keep her family and constituents in our prayers. And although no one can ever take her place, ever, it is incumbent upon us to fill the vacancy of this councilwoman's Ward 7 seat. City Code calls for the mayor to appoint someone to the seat who will serve the remainder of the term until the next general municipal election in 2025. The applications will be available. We begin, we'll, we'll start this process now, you know, and the application will be open no later than tomorrow morning for the interested residents of Ward 7, and will remain open until 5:00 PM on Friday, July 21st. The application is available at www.aurora-il.org/ Ward7appointee. Interested residents will complete the brief application, include both a letter of interest and a resume. Once the application period closes, my, my office will review them and interview selected candidates over the following two weeks. You know, I aim to have an appointment recommendation prepared for a city council vote at the regularly scheduled meeting on Tuesday, August 8th. If for any reason that timeline can't be met, I'll keep the council updated, and we'll call for a special meeting if necessary. However, I believe we have many 7 Ward residents who are not only interested in serving, but beyond capable and ready to serve to continue the work of Alderwoman Hardburns and forge a new pathway forward in Ward 7. On that note, we have received several calls from community members regarding Alderwoman Hardburns' annual MLK Back-to-School Bash. This would have been her 34th annual event. Although she served 32 years as Alderman, she did it two years as, as a private citizen. This would have been her 31st, 34th annual event, which she already began planning months and months ago. Rest assured, the event will go on as planned, and in a manner that would be befitting to Shakita Hardburns and make her proud. We have assembled a small team of community members to lead this year's event. The planning team members have all worked directly with this event for many years, including Mr. Muhammad, who will present my office, who will represent my office on the team. More information, volunteer opportunities will be posted. We look forward to a big celebration as we send our children back to school at this event, and the many other events our city council members are sponsoring this year. All right, there is no need for a closed session. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Second.
There's been a motion made by Alderman Garza, second by Alderman Franco, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries by, by voice vote. This meeting is adjourned.